Good evening, this is August 16th, 2018, some meeting of the Northampton City Council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell, I'm the council president, I'll be presiding tonight. Let me note the audio and video recording of these proceedings, and we'll begin as we always do with public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on any issue you wish, we only keep, ask you two things, keep it to three minutes or less, and remember that we can't engage in a back and forth with you, this is your time to give your opinion to us. The reason for these rules is just to make sure everyone is heard fairly and receives ample time. I'll begin with my sign up sheet, and then after that, anyone who hasn't signed up will be free to come and also give public comment. If I may just pronounce your name. The first person is Jude, Judy Sidney?
Yes.
And if, so the pocket is yours, if you give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Jude Sidney S.I.D.E.Y., McDonald House, 49 Old South Street. I'm just approaching to thank Mary Ann for helping us with our air conditioner problems, and hoping that she'll hang in with us for the mold problem. And that's all I wanted to say. We're kind of battling with Northampton Housing, and you were wonderful, far more relaxed than I was. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. City Clerk Pamela Powers.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Pam Powers, I'm the city clerk here in Northampton, and I reside at 105 North Main Street in Florence. I'm here tonight to remind everyone that Tuesday, September 4th, is voting day in Northampton and the entire state. I want to update everyone with a few pieces of information so that everyone is prepared for the day. Everyone is entitled to a ballot on primary day, no matter what your party affiliation is. So registered Democrats, Republicans, and Libertarians will only be offered their party's ballot. All unenrolled, also known as independent voters, will be offered their choice of one of three ballots, the ones I mentioned previously. Members of any other registered party will also have their choice of ballot on the primary day, and they'll be able to cast whichever ballot they'd like. Everyone is entitled to bring information into the voting booth with them to help them to cast their ballot for the candidate of their choosing. And this year, starting with the primary, we have new scanning and tabulating equipment that was authorized by the city council earlier this year. Information about the equipment is available on the city clerk's website, including a short tutorial about how to cast your ballot that was provided by the vendor for the new voting equipment. Voting security is of the utmost importance, and I want to ensure voters that the equipment is not tied to the internet in any way. Massachusetts communities are prohibited by law to capture an image of the cast ballots, so your ballots are scanned for tabulating and sorting only, and no image of it is retained. If you'll be out of the city on the day of the election, please consider voting absentee. You can stop by the city clerk's office to vote there or have your ballot mailed to you. And I want to wish all the candidates the best of luck on voting day, and I hope to see you all at the polls.
Thank you very much. Next we have Mark. Your last name's illegible, so I'll let you, I'll let you say it, okay. Floor is yours.
I'm Mark Chesbrough, I live at 87 Federal Street in, in Northampton here, and I'm, the only reason why I'm here is I got a real concern about our animal control officer not doing her job. I was bit by a dog. She would not even return Coley Dick's call to find out if the dog was vaccinated or not. This has been going on for three years. She has not done her job, people are getting hurt, people are getting maimed, and dogs are getting destroyed. And there's absolutely nothing being done. She will not return calls, or nothing. And I am just asking and appealing before a tragedy happens for something to be done about it. I had to go to court because I defended me and my dog. And I was told I would have been better off not hitting the owner but killing the dog. And is this right? I just want to know what I gotta do to defend me and my dog. It's out of control. People are coming from different towns even, with bad dogs. And you know as well as I do, something will happen to a child, like it has before, and then all hell breaks loose, you gotta muzzle your dog, you can't have your dog downtown? And, and I just don't know why she refuses to do her job. And it's very frustrating when people are coming to me, asking me, what can they do? And there's no effective dog officer in this town, she'd rather chase chickens and eagles, and do nothing for the community which she is supposed to be taking care of. And it's gonna get to the point where one of these times, somebody's got, a child or an adult, is gonna be maimed or killed. And there's just, it's out of control. And that's all I got to say, thank you. Thank you for hearing me.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. And a reminder to anyone who brings a specific issue to the city council, although we can't exchange in back and forth, you can't follow up with your city councilors separately after the meeting. The next person is David Dombrowski, please.
My name is Barry Roth. David wasn't able to make it, and he asked me if I would read his statement, so I have offered to do that. I then will speak for myself. Essentially, David's statement concerns the housing development on Emerson Way. There was a planning board hearing made, and some decisions made, which he feels he wasn't notified about. He specifically says, "I had received a postcard in the mail about a hearing. The postcard had minimal information, and it was confusing as to the subject. So I did not attend the Northampton public hearing dated July 26, 2018, at 7:13 PM, which was held at Council Chambers Municipal Building." Ultimately, it's the cities' residents who should have the final say in what should and should not be allowed in our neighborhoods. And I'm hoping that they can zero in, I think Jen said she could zero in. This was all that was sent in the mail, this little statement over here. 7:30 PM subdivision amended by Emerson Way to allocate six previously identified affordable units to another site at Emerson Way, Florence. That's what the announcement said. This is against the law. You have to give proper indication of what the meeting was about. The meeting was about moving the documents out of Emerson Way to a completely different location, one which happens to butt my property. You know, I think, I think having made that statement, I'll carry on with my statement, I believe I'm the next speaker, so, if you, if you like. I'm here to speak about the planning board hearing, which allowed Emerson Way to move the affordable units, housing units they committed to building on their property to Burt's Pit Road instead. This project was begun in 2002, and there were lots of, lots of problems, so the city struck a deal with them. Over the objections of neighbors who were concerned about its impact and the loss of the beautiful rural area, rural nature of the area, it was agreed that in exchange for being allowed to build this complex, they would build, they would build 11% affordable housing units. This was a fixed agreement. Fifteen years later, under new ownership, when they actually have to build the units, Emerson Way said, "Well, we don't really want to build the units, we really don't want to follow through on that. We've decided, what we'll do is we'll build them somewhere else." And they went to the Northampton Planning Board to request that change. And unbelievably, the Northampton Planning Board gave them that change, and all the people who are but Burt's Pit Road, and all the people who are but Emerson Way, were given no notification about that's what the meeting was. This is against the law, we will appeal to Superior Court. We don't want to go that route. But if you cannot influence the planning board to open up the hearing again so everybody can be heard, then that is what we will do. And we want each and every one of you to sign on to that appeal. At that hearing, it was, it was argued that the affordable housing owners would feel out of place living next to such expensive homes on Emerson Way. However, the new plan concentrates the owners altogether, thereby segregating them and stigmatizing them, and as a result, it will also have an impact on neighboring homes and their values. This amounts to spot zoning, creating zones that for different, not for mixed income, but for specific incomes. Remarkably, no valid justification for this has been given. According to the, the State Ethics Commission, state employees must, aren't supposed to accept $50, because it could influence them. I will point out that this particular builder gave $250 to Mayor Nakowicz's campaign only months before this came up before the planning board. He also offered in the sum of several hundred thousand dollars to Habitat Humanity if it be allowed to, to be built. You, the city councils must object, are obligated to object to this procedure. The lack of obligatory clear notification about the hearing, the fact that the developer waited 15 years and didn't keep their honor to build all these units, because it deliberately segregates people on income into concentrated areas against cities' planning guides, the lack of, of, the lack of justification for promoting this, the redefining of what an agreement means, all of these things come into play, they are absolutely outrageous. None of you should allow this. We love our community, we love the rural character of our neighborhood. When we feel threatened by overdevelopment, we like that our neighborhood presents presently as mixed income, and we want to keep it that way. Ryan, you are running for state office, I think it's up to you, if you want to go and clean up the state of Massachusetts, then it's imperative for you to show that you can do it by starting cleaning up what's going on in our town.
Thank you very much, thank you for those comments, okay. Next is Blair, Jimma, please.
Blair Jimma, I live at 3 Clark Avenue, I just wanted to briefly support the order to strengthen democracy in our housing units.
Thank you very much. Tom Burton.
Tom Burton, 81 Con Street. I also want to, well, first of all, I want to thank Mary Ann and Jim for showing up at the housing meeting we had last week, just last week. And also, I want to thank you for promoting this, this democratization of the housing authority, authority, because it really, the way it's working now, it's not working. And it's, it's, at this point, it's actually reached the level of possibly being dangerous, and, um, dangerous to the health and the welfare and the well-being of the people who, who live in these houses, over here, by place over on Con Street, in particular, but not limited to those places. So, this would be a way of getting us, the community more involved, I would hope. But anyway, Ryan, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Elizabeth Humphrey, please. You're ready to go.
Yep. Really, I just care to briefly support the order for democratizing the, and continuing the, actually making the Board of Housing a voteable elected board, excuse me, I'm really screwing up here, but that's really all I wanted to say, is I support that order, thank you.
Thank you for those comments as well. Is there anyone else who has not signed up but would like to give public comment at this time? Sure, Eric, please.
In brief, I believe it's, excuse me, Dan, Mr. Connell, I believe it's been mentioned, the Arizona iced tea is not recyclable in Massachusetts yet. I'm not really sure why, because it is recyclable in, in Maine and Hawaii, these five cent cans. So I did Google them, or send them a note, and they said that we do not require to recycle iced tea. The glass is recyclable, maybe goes to the dumpster, 66 is crushed. These are adding up by the thousands, I believe, every day, in five cents deposits, people can subsidize their rent. So, um, maybe there's something we can do about that. I don't know if it has to be legislated, Arizona iced tea. We'll see, I'll, I'll Google them again, maybe simply we could keep it on the agenda. These add up, go to landfill, I reckon by the thousands a day, so, and that's probably thousands, hundreds in cash for people's rent. Okay.
Good, thank you, appreciate, appreciate those comments, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to give public comment, who did not sign up, but feel free to step forward? If not, we'll convene, and I'll ask for a roll call, City Council, please.
Councilor Bidwell.
Here.
President.
Councilor Klein.
Here.
Councilor LaBard.
Present.
Councilor Murphy.
Here.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Councilor Sherrill.
Okay, so we have a quorum, and we are in session. I have no updates, but are there any one-minute announcements from members of the city council? None? Oh my gosh, the doldrums of summer. All right. Your honor, do you have any communications? Mr. Mayor, do you have any communications? No? Okay. The resolutions, this is 18.097, a resolution to lower the voting age for Northampton municipal election, second reading. Assume we want a wave reading?
Wave reading, yes.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Yes.
Second.
Made and seconded by Counselor Klein, any discussion on second reading? Now I ask for a roll call, please.
Councilor Bidwell.
Yes.
Councilor Carney.
Yes.
Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
Councilor Klein.
Yes.
Councilor LaBard.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Councilor Sherrill.
Resolutions approved unanimously on second reading. We'll go to the consent agenda next, I'll read the items on the consent agenda, and at the request of any one counselor, an item may be removed for individual discussion, otherwise, there is no discussion about the items on the consent agenda, which contains, first, the minutes of July 12, 2018. Second, the applications for taxi cab licenses, five in quantity for Jeffrey Miller of Cosmic Cab Company.
I'd like to discuss that separately.
So that will be removed separately. The next is application for business owner's permit for Jeff Miller of Cosmic Cab, same request?
Same request.
Okay, so those two are removed. An application for secondhand dealer license for the vintage seller. And then appointments to various boards, which are usually listed right up front, but are not, so I'd like to read them for the record, if I might, so please bear with me while I locate them. And for everyone playing along at home, the internet connection has gone out, which we usually rely on, you know, this is a sign of modern life, we rely too much on Google to answer all of our questions.
Ryan, do you want one?
Have it here, thank you, counselor. All right, so, we have, and these will be the equivalent to referrals?
Referrals.
To the Committee on City Services, which will review them. So to the Agricultural Commission is John O'Masta of 165 West Farms Road, Florence, from a term July 2018 to June 2021. Earl Chip M. Parsons of 137 Mill Valley Road, this, this is actually in Hadley, but farms are actually located in Northampton, the term will be July 2018 to June 2021. To the Arts Council, Kevin Palmerlow of 63 Revel Avenue, Northampton, for a term September 2018 to June 2021. This is to fill the vacancy after Jan Ruby's term expired in 2018. To the Central Business Architecture Committee, Joseph Blumenthal of 39 Chapel Street, Northampton, July 2018 to June 2021. To the Disability Commission, Linda Elkakis of 220 Rocky Hill Road in Florence, from September 2018 to June 2021. This is to fill the vacancy after Gaten Fortin's term expired in, in 2018. To Northampton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Emily Laufer of 241 Jackson Street Department, Pan B, Northampton. And then to the Zoning Board of Appeals, David C. Bloomberg of 86 Vernon Street, Northampton, July 2018 to June 2021. Any removals there? Hearing none, that is it for the consent agenda, so do I hear a motion to approve it?
Remove approval. Second.
Except for those except for that.
Except for the two that were removed.
Thank you very much, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with, with exceptions, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, the consent agenda is approved. So now we're gonna go, in the order in which they were removed, to the ones that were removed. And the first is 18.087, applications for taxi cab licenses, five for Jeffrey Miller. Is there a motion to grant these applications, to get them on the floor?
Removed.
Made by Counselor Bidwell, seconded by Counselor Nash. Discussion on this, I'll give you an update. As you recall, the council, on two occasions, granted an extension for these taxi cab licenses because one of the places of businesses where Cosmic Cab was out of conformance with the laws of the city of Northampton. Its owner then went to the Zoning Board of Appeals to seek a temporary permit to operate at this location, and the location in question was Hooker Avenue. It's my understanding that the ZBA has indeed granted the temporary permit, and so the taxi company is in compliance with the law, and if it wished to, the council could in fact grant these taxi licenses lawfully. That's my understanding of the situation, but I'll ask Counselor Nash if he wishes to add something, because he was the one who suggested they be removed from the.
Yeah, I, actually, I had some questions, um, so, there's a long list of, of things that Cosmic will be asked to adhere to, adhere to during the duration of this permit. And my question is, you know, let's say, you know, there shall be no on-street employee or cab parking. I mean, will this be revoked if that is discovered? Or does it mean that next time around, we aren't, aren't going to reapprove this permit? So, that's my question.
My, my interpretation of, my, what I think the answer is, I think the city council, by city ordinance, is the licensing authority, and so I interpret that we have the ability to give licenses and also remove them if necessary. I suppose people could argue that point, but that's what I think.
So it would come back to us.
I think someone would have to initiate a repeal. I can't be entirely certain, to be, to be honest, I haven't researched how someone would repeal a license, but as you know, this would go, I believe, until the month of May, if I'm not mistaken, is it May?
The permit goes until May 1st.
April 30th.
April 30th or May 1st, so.
ZBA is.
So at that time, we'll be coming back to revisit a new license anyway. So that's the information I can provide.
Okay.
Yeah. Counselor LaBard?
Yes, I attended that zoning board meeting because I had another meeting that pertained to Ward 6, and it was a monthly meeting. And even the owner, who was there naturally, understood what the intense conditions were. So, I think he understands that. I also feel that the zoning board did what exactly where the counselor had great concerns about the no parking on the street and so forth like that. So I was very pleased to hear of the conditions that were placed in, around that site. And I, I would say, if he does not abide by that, there would be a big problem. I think they could revoke that license.
And I'll, I'll just read the conditions into the record for those who are interested. The conditions that the ZBA stipulated was that the permit will expire, as someone said, on April 30th. No more than five cabs shall operate at the site, no more than three cabs shall be stored overnight, off-street parking shall be at least five feet from the street, and no more than two vehicles shall be in the 10-foot front setback. There shall be no on-street employee or cab parking, which I think that was a major concern of the residents. There shall be no idling of employer, excuse me, of employee or cab vehicles. Vehicles shall not be parked so as to block private residential driveways. That's nice, isn't it?
Yep.
And vehicle turnaround should be done using the site driveway, no car maintenance is allowed between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. All unregistered vehicles related to the cab operation shall be removed by September 1st, so those are the things. Counselor, did you have other questions to raise?
I, I just wanted to say, I had a lengthy meeting with one of the, the residents, and one of the things he spoke to, and I think it, it is addressed here, and there's a lot of rules here, that, that there's turnover with the shifts. And that is where, so, you know, you have five cabs here, you have five cars showing up, people getting out of the cars, the cabs pull in, you got five drivers getting out to go get in their cars, so you're talking 15 cars, possibly, turning over. And the, the issue that this resident mentioned, the biggest problem was the turnover in the middle of the night shifts, that there was, there would be a lot of noise on the street, there would be cars revving and idling, and, which is a little unusual for, you know, when you have a residential street, to have that kind of activity going on. So, but I, I think I'm, I'm fine with moving forward on this with all of these restrictions.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? No? The motion on the floor is to approve the, the application. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? So those applications are granted unanimously. The other thing we had not been able to do was actually grant an application for a business owner's permit, for which I would ask a motion now to grant the permit so we can discuss it.
Move to approve. Second.
Made by Counselor Bidwell and seconded by Counselor Klein. Is there any discussion on granting a business permit so this business can operate? I think all the issues were related to the ones we discussed, but Counselor, Counselor would raise a question.
Yeah, and you can kind of see it here, so, we, we just approved, you know, cabs to be operating out of One Street, and the, the address of this business is at another place. So, that, and, and this is, I, I'm just pointing the, this out, it's the difficulty of, one of, one of the difficulties as we wrangle with our taxi cabs licensing, that, you know, that the business can exist practically in virtual space, but the actual impact of the company can be on a residential street. That's all I wanted to say.
God, the counselor makes a good point, that's one of the reasons why we amended our ordinance, to apply to all locations in which a company does business in the city, so it can't just be in, in offshore tropical island or something like that, it has to be all the businesses where it actually counts. Is there any other discussion on granting the business permit? All those in favor of granting the permit, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, so that is granted unanimously as well. Excellent, so, down with the consent agenda, we come to 18.139, a warrant for the 2018 state primary election. Two readings are requested, since the state primary election is soon. And I will read this into, over there. This is upon the recommendation of City Clerk Pamela L. Powers, oh, 18.139, warrant for the 2018 state primary election, ordered that meetings of the members of Democratic, Republican, and Libertarian parties qualified to vote in the city of Northampton will be held on Tuesday, the fourth day of September 2018, in several polling places designated for this purpose by the city council as follows. Ward 1, Precinct A, in Jackson Street School Auditorium, same for precinct B. Ward 2, Precinct A, in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School, the same for precinct B. Ward 3 precincts, let's see, Ward 3A and Ward 3B, Ward 4A and Ward 4B are all in the senior center, the Great Room, 67 Con Street. Ward 5, Precinct A, in the Florence Civic and Business Building, 90 Park Street. Ward 5, Precinct B, in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. Ward 6, precincts A and B, in the Robert K. Finn Ryan Road School. Ward 7, Precinct A, in the John F. Kennedy Middle School Community Room, and Ward 7, Precinct B, in Leeds School Gymnasium, lower level. The polls will be opened at 7:00 in, in the forenoon, and closed at 8:00 in the evening of that said day, and all such members will, in the several wards and precincts in which they are individually entitled to vote between said hours, give in their votes for the nomination of candidates for Senator and Congress for the Commonwealth, Governor for this Commonwealth, Lieutenant Governor for this Commonwealth. Governor for this Commonwealth, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer and Prosecutor General, Auditor, Representative in Congress for the Second District, Counselor for the Eighth District, Senator in General Court, Hampshire Franklin and Worcester District, Representative in General Court, First Hampshire District, District Attorney, Northwestern District, Clerk of Courts, Hampshire County, Register of Eats, the Hampshire District. So motion to approve that order?
Make the motion.
Okay. Made and seconded. Any discussion on approving the order? Counselor Bidwell?
I just had a couple of questions. I wonder if we could recognize our, our city clerk for a couple of questions, since she was kind enough to stick around.
I don't think we need a vote for that.
Thank you. I'm sure you've been asked this many times, but could you update us on how the, how the new technology, the new equipment that you've referred to, will handle stickers? Because we anticipate in the, in the state senate, for race in particular, there being a number of sticker candidates in state books.
Yes, that's what we hear. We are asking the candidates to provide stickers to the city clerk's office, so that during testing of the equipment, we'll have the opportunity to see how those stickers function in the machines. The, the plan is that, that the candidates will provide stickers that, at least, that's my plan, and I hope that's their plan, stickers that will fit in the space that's allotted for the write-in candidate. There are ballots that are available that I can provide as samples, so that people will have that, you know, that dimension. The, when a candidate or a voter places their sticker on the ballot, the require, the state requires that you also color in the associated oval with that. However, we also rely, or we also impose voter intent procedures when we count the ballot. At the end of the evening, every single ballot needs to be physically looked at, to make sure that if there isn't an oval that hasn't been filled in, that even though the, there is a write-in candidate, for example, that write-in candidate's vote will still count. So, in addition to the technology recognizing that, that write-in circle being colored in, we also have the human piece of it, where we will be looking at every single ballot. Does that address your question?
It does, that's, that's, that's very helpful.
Is that it?
Any other questions for City Clerk Powers?
Just one quick follow-up. When do you anticipate sample ballots might be?
The specimen ballots are in.
Oh, they are?
Yep, they're, they're color, the specimen ballots are color-coded. In addition to that, a couple of weeks ago, I had made my own sample ballots with the absentee ballots that we had received, and those are already on the city clerk's website as well. When you go to the city clerk's page, if you click on elections, you'll see all the information that's pertinent to the September fourth primary, so.
Any other questions?
They're there, and you can, and you can pick up sample ones in the office.
So always, we appreciate your diligence and professionalism. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on the warrant? The order for the warrant? We have it on the floor. All those for a roll call on this.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Suspend the rule.
And Counselor Bidwell, I'd say.
Oh.
Please.
Pass on first reading. Counselor LeBarge makes a motion to suspend rules to allow for a second reading. Is there a second on the motion to suspend rules?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All those in favor of spending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Rules suspended? Is there a motion to approve in second reading?
Move to approve in second reading.
Very good. Is there a second? Very good. We're moving right along. Any discussion on second reading of the warrant for the election, so we can have democracy happen in Northampton? Now, as for roll call, again.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Okay. Your order is approved in second reading. Thank you very much. We'll now recess for the Committee on Finance. Start with Counselor David Murphy.
Laura, would you read the role for finance, please?
Sure.
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
So, first order of business tonight is to approve some minutes. We have minutes from July twelfth, we have minutes from July twenty-fourth, and we have minutes from March twenty-seventh to approve tonight.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now we have our fourth quarter eighteen financial report, and Susan Wright, the
finance director, is here to bring us up to date on how, how eighteen ended up.
This is not a completely final fourth quarter report. The auditor is still working on closing out the books, and there's still some revenues that are planned to come in, waiting for some grant reinforcements, et cetera. But, in general, I'll start with the general fund, the revenues for the general fund. Some of the highlights are hotel motel and meals tax receivables. For two thousand and eighteen, hotel motel revenue from the hotel motel tax was up forty-two thousand dollars, or six percent, over the previous year. And revenue from the meals tax was up thirty-seven thousand dollars over last year, or five percent. So the two of those together are, you know, good, healthy economic indicators. In terms of parking, we also had some good news there. The parking receipts, just the, the parking receipts, not parking tickets, parking receipts, came in exactly as it did before. And the reason I say that that's good is that we implemented the new kiosk system in July last year, and so there were, you know, times in July and August where the system was still being implemented, and so revenues were a little off for July and August, but it was a result of our new system, which is working quite well. So the fact that revenues were, were the same as the previous year tells me that, had we been fully up and running in July and August, they would have been higher. So, so in terms of the revenues for the general fund, if you look at the statement that you have, another highlight that I'd like to point out is, on the third page, our detail about permit revenue. And the building department, which would include building inspections, plumbing, wiring, weights and measures, periodic inspections, and sidewalk signage inspections, there was an increase of fifteen percent in permit fees over the prior year. We brought in a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars more collectively in permit fees than the previous year. So, that bodes well for the new growth number that we'll be getting from the assessors in a couple of months, which will help drive the, you know, finalizing the two thousand and nineteen budget. So there's really nothing else to point out. There are no revenues that I was concerned about that came in, you know, anywhere lower than I thought that they would. So we're looking at a pretty healthy number in terms of revenues exceeding our estimates. In terms of the expenditures in the general fund, if you look at that report, you'll see that the total that was turned back between all of the city departments, and I'm not including the schools here, but all the city departments, the turnback at the end of the year was two point two million. Now, last year, the turnback from city departments was one point nine eight. So we're about three hundred thousand dollars more in turnbacks over last year. So again, that will bode well for when we go to get free cash certified. So the turnbacks are a result of departments not fully expending their entire budget. We had vacancies in some departments, which certainly is where the surplus salary came from. And then other departments, you know, things may not have cost as much. There's turnbacks all, you know, throughout that. And then there's also turnbacks in health insurance, and that's primarily a result of all the vacancies. So if I have vacancies, you then are not spending money on health insurance. So, so the two numbers, the revenue that came in over our estimates, and the money that was turned back, which means we spent less than we thought, those two numbers together are what feed our free cash. So it looks like we're going to be, you know, fairly in line with where we were last year. In terms of the enterprise funds, all four of them brought in a hundred percent or more of the revenue that they were anticipated. Sewer Enterprise Fund came in about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue, more than the prior year. Water Enterprise came in slightly lower than the prior year, but still just above our estimates. I think part of that would be attributed to some of the water bans that we had last summer. Stormwater and solid waste, pretty much the same as the prior year. No big surprises there. And then in terms of their turnbacks, everything is pretty much following the same track as it did last year. So, in general, I think the budget, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty much as we expected, and every report I've given you quarterly has pretty much said everything's on track. So, no big surprises, but I am happy to see that parking, meals, and permits, which all are kind of economic indicators for the city, things that can go up and down as the economy changes, all of those are looking very positive.
And our collection rate was excellent.
Yeah. So, so we're, yeah, so we're doing good.
Any questions for Susan?
No.
Counselor?
There are just a few places in the revenues that I wanted to ask about where they came in quite a bit lower than what was estimated, so just wanted to hear a little bit about that. Like garage fees are at seventy percent, parking garage revenue, so I'm just wondering if we have any sense of what that's about.
Okay, so what, what is happening with the parking? If you look at, up until last year, we had five categories. We had parking revenues, which, let me tell you, parking, that first line, parking revenues is four four two oh one oh. That is strictly meter revenue from on-street parking. Parking lot revenue is the, is the revenue from the lots, parking garage is the garage, parking passes is the passes that people buy. Then we had the PD parking garage. In July, we implemented the kiosks, and the money coming in from the kiosks that was on credit cards is now being lumped into one line item. So, before that money would have gone into the parking revenue, the first two lines, now it's all in another line. So, if you look, I didn't even have anything budgeted for parking kiosk credit card or the mobile app. Remember, we also went to Park Mobile. I didn't budget for those because they were brand-new. So I knew we'd bring in about the same amount of revenue, but I didn't distribute it. So, it, in, in the two thousand and nineteen budget, when we set the tax rate, I will redistribute it, and I will be putting in a projected budget for it, for the Park Mobile app and the kiosks. And then I'll be lowering those other line items. So the total will still be the same, the total will be about one point eight million in parking revenues. And I will point out that every year, we estimate how much we're going to bring in in parking, and anything that's over that estimate goes into the receipt reserve for parking. So this year, at the end of the year, we were able to, we actually brought in two million dollars in parking revenue, but two hundred thousand of that was moved to, was over and above our estimate, so that was moved to the receipt reserve for parking. And that's where we get the money to do the pay kiosks, to make repairs to the garage, et cetera. So, so that's, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because it will fix itself in two thousand and nineteen. I just didn't budget anything for those, because we had no idea how much we were going to get in credit card revenue. We didn't know how many people were going to use Park Mobile.
I was just wondering if one of the lots had been closed or.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's just because of the way the numbers are put in for the budget line, but.
And then there are two departments that I'm charged for services that came in low. One is in the treasurer's office, I think it is, and the other one's in the police department. Is it seventy-five percent of projected?
Which, is that, which page is that? On page two? Is it in the department revenue charges for services?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so police department. Yeah, that one is, the police department revenue is money they get from fines that are paid to the state, that it becomes our share, like our share of, say, a speeding ticket, that, you know, whatever. So those can go up and down. So I don't, I can find out from the chief, though, why it was, and what I need to do is look at what it was last year. It may, it probably was in the sixty-five thousand dollar range last year, so why it's fifteen lower, I will ask the chief. And then the other one you asked about was the treasurer?
Right, that's a small amount of money, though. It's two hundred fifty dollars, but I was just curious about why it came in quite a bit lower.
Yeah, I'm not, I'd have to look, that's a real small miscellaneous line item, so I'm not really sure what goes into that. But I can check on that, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Susan on the eighteen budget? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
So, the next item is eighteen one four one, an order to award a contract for the FY nineteen audit to Scanlon Associates. The charter requires us by the fifteenth of September to appoint an auditor for nineteen, the fiscal year we're in now, that won't end until the end of June. So, finance actually met, that was the meeting that we did on the twenty-fourth, with regards to that, to try and make the deadline. Scanlon Associates, who's doing our audit this year, has agreed to maintain the same price in eighteen for nineteen as they did in eighteen. So, the recommendation from the finance committee, I think, will be that we go ahead with that. So the order is, whereas section seven six of the Northampton City Charter requires the city council to annually award a contract for an outside audit of the books and accounts of the city, to be conducted by a certified public accountant or by a firm of certified public accountants, which has no personal interest, direct or indirect, in the fiscal affairs of the city or any of its officers. So therefore be ordered that the city council hereby awards the contract for auditing services for FY nineteen to Scanlon Associates LLC at prices and rates quoted in the company's FY two thousand and nineteen letter of engagement, essentially the same as they were for eighteen. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second. Any, any discussion on this?
Counselor Nash?
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I think it was Mr. Scanlon who actually made this suggestion at one point, that with auditors, you know, it's, it's good to have an auditor who comes in many years in a row, but at a certain point, it's good to bring in somebody else. And during my time on council, Scanlon and Associates have been doing the work, and I'm wondering if finance has thought about when that turnover might be.
We actually did discuss that. Part of our problem was that, this, this came up in July with a September fifteenth deadline. What we're going to propose to do, because Scanlon is just finishing a three-year contract, so that was negotiated, I think, before you were here. The eighteen audit is the last year of that three-year contract. What we're going to do, because with such a short timeframe, we really didn't have the opportunity to solicit bids from other auditors, and then review them, and be able to make a recommendation for another company. The other problem is that it's the middle of vacation season, and the auditors, in addition to that, are diving into, it's the end of eighteen, so they're all busy. Scanlon Associates would have had kind of an advantage, because they know the city. So if we'd had five or six bids, their pencil would have been the sharpest, because they know the most about us. The other people wouldn't have much of a chance to study Northampton and actually bid competitively with the short timeframe. So what finance talked about doing was perhaps beginning in March for the twenty audit, and submit applications like we did three years ago. Really, the, it was more the fact that we had that deadline, and we could maintain the cost with Scanlon, they agreed to do it for one more year. But I think in, in March or April of nineteen, we will get together and submit requests for proposals, and entertain some interviews with some other auditors to see if, in fact, we should make a change. Does that pretty much sum up our discussion for people on finance?
Counselor? And, and just to be clear, in a technical note, what you're actually doing is taking the order as included in the agenda, and you read language that you essentially wish to replace it with.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you're putting on, that constitutes an amendment of the.
Yeah, originally, it was going to just award it to them, but we changed, we wanted to recommend it. Do you have your original order, eighteen one four one? Have you have that?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
We omitted the second whereas, because it really doesn't make any difference, it relates to federal funds. And then we changed. And then we changed it now, therefore of it, because we wanted to refer to the letter of engagement, rather than an agreed upon contract price, rather than contract price, we wanted to refer to the letter of engagement. So, we probably should offer that as an amendment. Are we all, can we come up with that? Somebody want to propose that amendment? To switch, to switch it from, that the City Council hereby awards a contract for auditing services for FY '19 to Scanlon and Associates LLC at the same price as agreed upon in '18, we'd like to change the language to, that the City Council hereby awards a contract for auditing services for FY '19 to Scanlon Associates at the prices and rates quoted in the company's FY '19 engagement letter. So, rather than just agreed upons, refer to the engagement letter that they submitted, which has all the prices in it.
Still moved. Second up.
Second. All right, any discussion on that? Any questions from, yes, Counselor?
Just trying to tie the number of 66,400 to the numbers in the contract. I'm assuming that 66,400 is a not-to-exceed, effectively. If, if, if they didn't require billing eight or nine days at $700 a day, which is the discretionary part of the contract, they would actually wind up billing for something less than that, right? So, it's effectively a not-to-exceed, it's a cap, no more than that.
And, the thing that's a little confusing is, there's, they, they audit the city books, which is, which is us, and I think that's about $49,000. It goes up, because they also audit the school, and the school department, the school committee is kind of in charge in that. So, our portion of the audit's $49,000, but the difference between that and, and the $60,000 figure is the portion of the audit that is done by, done for the school committee.
And, even if you add what they charge for the school committee and for retirement plan, it still gets you up to $58,000, which is, so that, that remainder is those daily charges that, on a discretionary basis, they might be charging. I'll, I'm just making the point, perhaps, it's unnecessary that it's, we're not really authorizing a flat 66,400, we're authorizing up to that, should it be necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and in fact, we're striking that whole reference to the 66.
Referring to the engagement letter, yeah.
And in place of that, it would just say, the City Council hereby awards a contract for auditing services for this fiscal year '19 to Scanlon Associates at the prices and rates quoted in the company's letter of engagement, which, as the Councilwoman points out, includes partly a per diem rate, partly a flat rate, I think there's a total of like five or so different components of the... Much cleaner way to do it, that way we're not doing too much or too little. It's funny, because in the past, I don't think we did this with an order at all, we just kind of had a motion to grant a contract to an auditor, but we kind of want to maybe be a little more specific this time. So, we have a letter of engagement, which is very specific, and we're referring to that.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes. On the memorandum for 2019 independent audit, if you look at what Mr. Scanlon is stating, that he has verbally agreed to hold the same price as for the 2018 audit, which is 49,000, 43,000 for the city's basic financial statements, and 6,000 for the audit of the retirement system. So, he's combining all these entities at the same price.
And then the schools are on top of that. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's our part of the budget, and also the school's part of the budget. Yeah. Any other questions on this in Finance? Counselor?
The only other was just a general comment, that I, I too was going to raise the question that we talk about every year, the pros and cons versus sticking with continuity versus a fresh set of eyes. And I appreciate the kind of compromise that you've arrived at, to go one year, but then with a much greater lead time, allow for the possibility of bringing in possible competitors.
Yeah, and we certainly, I mean, Finance let everybody know what, you know, how that process progresses, so that any Counselor that wants to attend the meetings where we, we talk to potential auditors to make a recommendation, everyone would be welcome to come and attend. Three years ago, as I recall, that was pretty well attended and, and well discussed by the Council, for those who were around. So, first, to the amendment of that language, to put in reference to the engagement letter. If there's no more discussion on that, we had a motion on that. All in favor of the amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, in Finance? And then, to the entire order as amended.
And that amendment also removes the second whereas clause?
The second whereas, yeah. So, it's just the first whereas, and then the language, now therefore be ordered with the engagement letter. So, as amended, all in favor in Finance? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, thank you. It's kind of overly confusing for recommending things staying the same as '18. Our next order is 18-144, an order for inter-municipal agreements to provide sealer of weights and measures services to the town of South Hadley and East Hampton. Order that whereas mass general law, Section 40, subsection 4A, allows for joint operation of public activities among governmental units, and whereas mass general law, Section 40, subsection 4A, requires that such inter-governmental agreements be approved in a city by the City Council, the mayor, and whereas the city of Northampton provides services to and shares services with other municipalities, therefore pursuant to mass general law, Section 40, subsection 4A, the City Council hereby authorizes the city of Northampton to enter into agreements with the town of South Hadley and the city of East Hampton to provide sealer of weights and measures services to these municipalities, and assess each municipality per the agreements. Do we have a motion in Finance?
Make a motion. Second.
A second? Okay, and Susan can tell us what's up here, because we, we already do that for some communities, correct?
Right, we already provide services to Granby, Amherst, and Hadley, and we've been approached by South Hadley and East Hampton. You know, towns that are above, below a certain population, the state will do the sealer of weights and measures, but once you get to a certain size, you need to have your own sealer of weights and measures. And I believe the East Hampton one retired, I'm not sure what happened in South Hadley, but they've approached us, we're using the same pricing that we do, we make a, we come up with a price based on the number of devices that the sealer of weights and measures needs to go out and measure. And they measure every gas pump, every scale, every farm stand, scale, he goes out and, and you see his seal, probably when you go to get gas, you see John Frye, he's done it for the city for quite some time. So, we will be bringing in, between these two towns, about another $11,000 a year.
For that service?
Yeah.
Any questions on this in Finance? Well, then, having no further questions, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Great. The next is 18-147. This is upon the recommendation of the mayor. Order that the following budgetary transfers for the FY '819, I'm sorry, budget hereby made, this is in the city clerk's office for election workers, and this is going to move $42,900 out of the OM portion of the budget, and put that same $42,900 into the PS section of the budget. And the next order, we'll, we'll talk about that, but because the, we took a position on the fact that we had to make sure that we were paying a certain wage to our city employees, they used to get stipends, now they have to get an hourly rate. So, the money goes from OM to PS, so that we can pay them. And then the next, the next order that's coming up is actually the rates that we'll be paying them at. So, it, it's done to conform with our wishes about paying a basic wage to our city employees. So, again, it's 42,000 from OM to PS in the clerk's office for the elections. We have a motion in Finance?
Still motion.
Second. Okay, any more discussion on this one? All in favor of a positive recommendation?
Yeah.
Oh, we do. Counselor.
Susan, I want to thank you very much, calling you today, because I was very concerned of how we apparently did it before, where we did use the OM money automatically, and you explaining it very thoroughly to me about why we are taking the OM and just strictly going PS because of what you had talked to me about. Thank you.
We, we need to comply with the IRS, and, and they are employees, so we can't, we shouldn't really be paying them on accounts payable, and as, as Counsel Murphy said, we want to make sure we're following through with the Council's ordinance, that we're paying people at least the minimum wage, and so, this will accomplish that.
What actually initiated this was because of what happened in Chicokey?
Well, it came to the attention of treasurers locally, that IRS had audited Chicokey and had said that they were doing it wrong. They were paying their election workers on OM, on, on accounts payable, instead of treating them as employees. So, we're correcting that, we're learning from their experience, and we're going to do this going forward, we'll be paying our election workers on, on payroll.
Thank you for the thorough job, Susan.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in Finance? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the next one goes along with that, it's 18-148, an order to authorize compensation for city election workers. Whereas mass general law, Section 54, subsection 22, provides that election officers shall receive compensation as the City Council may determine, and whereas the Board of Registars recognizes the need for flexible time schedules for workers, and further recognizes that an hourly compensation structure will provide fair and equitable pay through all precincts, now therefore be ordered that the City Council authorizes the following rates for election officers. Wardens and deputy wardens will receive $20 an hour, clerks, deputy clerks, and constables will receive $16 an hour, and inspectors will receive $11 an hour. Do we have a motion in Finance?
Motion. Second.
Any questions on this? And this is, where's where the 42,000? Counselor?
I think there's just a, a little Scrivener's error here, it says that the inspector will receive $11, and it doesn't say $11 an hour, so it looks like that would be the total.
Would you like to, well, Counselor, I can want to offer an amendment to this, so that we can put in an hour?
Yeah, make an amendment.
I think if it's a Scrivener's error...
It probably is, but we just...
Susan, we might need some...
You want, go ahead, just amend it, we'll put hour in there now.
Okay.
amend it? Second that?
Yes.
Any questions on the amendment?
Yes.
Well, no, sorry, go with the amendment, go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Then, be comfortable with the motion as amended, by adding per hour to the $11 for the inspectors, all right? Any other discussion? Then, all in favor of a positive recommendation of the order as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And I know of no new business. Second?
All in favor.
Aye, thank you.
Back to the City Council, is there any objection to moving an order up? I'm aware that there are a couple members of the audience at least who are here for an order about renaming a street. So, unless there's any objection, I'd, I'd like to move 18.145 up. This is an order to name the vehicle entranceway to Northampton City Hall Mayor Sean Dunphy Way, and as opposed to reading it myself, I could defer to our current mayor, if he wishes to introduce it.
Okay.
Your preference.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Which one?
I'm leaving glasses for this one, because it's a smaller...
Yes, thank you very much. So, this is an order I've introduced to name the vehicle entranceway to Northampton City Hall Mayor Sean Dunphy Way. Order that whereas Sean Michael Dunphy, 1941, 2015, was elected the 38th Mayor of the city of Northampton in 1969, and served three terms from 1970 to 1975, and whereas Mayor Dunphy was the youngest mayor in the city's history at age 28, and the first to envision and carry out the role of mayor as a full-time chief executive. And whereas Mayor Dunphy played an immeasurable role in modernizing and professionalizing Northampton city government, including the creation of its first planning department, adoption of its first comprehensive zoning ordinance, establishment of its first modern conservation commission, creation of its first municipal recycling center, creation of its first industrial park, a significant expansion of city recreation programs, and major investments in infrastructure. And whereas Mayor Dunphy also played a key role in helping spark the revitalization of downtown Northampton through key investments in infrastructure and sidewalk amenities, and helping attract retail businesses and housing development, and was recognized posthumously for that role in 2017 by being added to the Eva Trager Memorial, quote, "honoring the memory of those who had a significant impact on the vitality of downtown Northampton," unquote. And whereas Sean Dunphy's service to the city he loved transformed and advanced both the role of mayor and city government itself in improving the lives of its residents. And so, now therefore be it ordered that the vehicle entranceway adjacent to Northampton City Hall at 210 Main Street, leading to the municipal parking lot there behind, is hereby designated as Mayor Sean Dunphy Way, to honor the outstanding and visionary contributions of Sean Dunphy to his community and the municipal government he led as mayor of Northampton. Thank you. If I may, I'd like to make the motion to put this on the floor for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion, either from our mayor or the City Council?
I just wanted to add that, you know, following, well, Judge Dunphy, I mean, he was an accomplished public servant as mayor, and then went on to have a second, equally accomplished career as a judge, in the family and probate court, rising actually to the chief justice role. So, he sort of had these two incredible careers, all focused on serving people in public service. So, following his death, I had an opportunity to speak with his grandchildren, actually, as well as his widow, Ann Dunphy, about what might be an appropriate way to memorialize him. And we talked about a number of different things, and this just sort of seemed really fitting. We just redid the, the parking lot area and made some improvements, and I had a chance to talk to Ann several weeks ago, and she was very tickled by the idea, and I know her family was as well. So, so the, the goal would be, again, it would not, it's not a public way, per se, but we'd be mounting a, a large green sign that would denote that, and kind of has a, kind of a double meaning as well, just because he kind of, so, sort of set the way for modern city government.
Thank you. It's unusual, but are there any members of the audience who would like to speak to this? We'd be happy to recognize you, if you wish, and if not, that would certainly be okay as well. Not to put anyone on the spot, but anyone would be welcome to do so. So, a motion to recognize members of the public for this purpose? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any questions?
My name is Marcia Buick, 115 Fairway Village in Leeds. I was privileged to work on Sean's first campaign in 1969, and to see the growth and professionalism of city government, and all that he did, and all that he meant to so many people, and I thank you, Mayor Narcoitz, for recognizing that, and I think it's a long time that we've been wanting to do something, and this is a very fitting place that you've come up with, to, to name the Sean Dunphy Way, which is the Sean Dunphy Way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this? I'll just say, I, I think this is a wonderful idea, obviously, Mayor Dunphy, well before my time, but whenever I talk to those I know in the city who serve as my kind of institutional memory, you know, the word that I hear is not just professionalism, but also integrity. And I think the idea that we, we're going to have the Sean Dunphy Way going by City Hall and to the City Council chambers is a very fitting piece of symbolism, because I think his work, from what I understand and have learned from others, really embodies what good government is, and will be a reminder for all of us to make sure we adhere to the principles of good government in our work. So, I'm also, I'd like to thank the mayor for bringing this forward, and I hope it, hope we have a unanimous vote in favor tonight in the Council. Any other counselors who would wish to speak to this? Counsel Bidwell?
Just, just a question, will, will there be some kind of public event and dedication associated with this, Mr. Mayor?
There, I'm not at liberty to discuss that, there won't be, but it's, we're trying to make it a surprise, so...
All right.
So, yes, we are, we are, we are, we are working on that, but, but the time hasn't been set yet, so...
Now, don't claim too much executive privilege, because it hasn't passed yet, you know?
What's that? Exactly, exactly, it hasn't passed.
Although I feel good about its chances.
The Counselor was actually suggesting the, the question, so, thank you.
That's a good point. Any other discussion? Okay, well, I would ask for a, a roll call on this order, please.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
And Counselor Klein?
Yes.
That order is approved unanimously, so thank you very much. I'd like to return to regular order, and take up the financial orders that we have before us. Let's see...
Let's see, the first is 18.144, an order to enter into intermunicipal agreements to provide seal over weights and measures services to South Haley and East Hampton. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move.
I took one out of order, but we got this one, and we have a motion from Counselor Murphy. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second, any discussion on this one? Or Counselor Nash?
This is the Scanlon and Associates?
No, I skipped that.
Oh.
By accident, and so now we're on weights and measures, and we'll go directly back to the audit after that, so. Someone should audit my parliamentary acumen. And if no other discussion, I'd ask for a roll call.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge. Yes. Suspend the rule.
Okay, Counselor LaBarge makes a motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion on suspension of rules? All those in favor of doing so, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, rules suspended, is there a motion on second reading?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on second reading for this order? If not, another roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy.
Yes. So, that is approved unanimously in second reading. Now, we'll go for the fun one. This is 18.141, an order to award contract for fiscal year 19 audit to Scanlon and Associates at first reading as amended by the Committee on Finance. Is there a motion to approve this order?
To approve.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Nash. Any discussion? Counselor Nash?
I'd just like to thank Finance for their due diligence on, you know, the way they figured this thing out. I think it's a great solution, so thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I would ask for a roll call.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Second. Okay, any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, rules suspended, is there a motion on second reading? Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so made by Counselor Klein, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Any discussion? Roll call again.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
As proven unanimously again, now we're on to O-18148, an order to authorize compensation for city election workers.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the order? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Any, is there a second suspension?
Second.
Any discussion on suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, rules suspended, move second reading? Anybody?
Move second reading. Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on second reading? And whenever ready, we'll have a roll call.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
And Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Approved unanimously. Financial orders in second reading, 18134, an order to authorize funding for the Rocky Hill Greenway Multi-Use Trails. Motion to approve this order?
Move to approve.
For a second?
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to a roll call.
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Stop that.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
And Counselor Klein.
Yes.
All right, one, two, three, four, five, six. All right, that is six votes, so. So, we're okay. That is approved, then. Good, so that takes care of financial orders. Now, we move to 18142. This is an order to strengthen democratic representation in the Northampton Housing Authority. I'll read it for the record. As per the recommendation of me, it's ordered the mayor's authorized and requested to seek state legislations follows, something to the effect of an act expanding the membership of the Housing Authority in the City of Northampton, be it enacted by the Senate and House Representatives and General Court Assembly as follows. Section 1, notwithstanding any general or special law, the contrary, members of the Housing Authority of Northampton shall include, in addition to the five members provided by Chapter 121b, Section 5, six additional members, each of whom shall be a tenant in a building owned and operated by or on behalf of the Housing Authority. These six members shall be chosen in an election among all tenants of the building owned and operated by or on behalf of the Housing Authority for a term of two years. Such elections shall be held in accordance with regulations promulgated by the Housing Authority and/or the Department. In the case of a vacancy, the mayor shall appoint a tenant member, subject to City Council approval, to fill the remainder of the unexpired term. Six members shall constitute a quorum. Section to this act shall take effect upon its passage. So, is there a motion to approve this order for the sake of discussion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, made by Counselor Klein, seconded by Counselor Nash. I'll say at the outset, I think the appropriate way to dispose of this tonight is to refer it to at least one committee, for a couple reasons. One, I think it's a complex proposal. And second, I think that we want to set up a process whereby we have substantial public comment and discussion, in particular, discussion from residents of the Northampton Housing Authority. So, rather than just send it on its way tonight, I would like to discuss some place to put it.
Move to refer to legislative matters and community resources? I was thinking resources.
Yeah, community resources. It's not a city entity, yeah.
So, the motion is made. Is it seconded?
Seconded, yeah.
So, discussion on the referral. So, Counselor Nash and Counselor Bidwell.
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you for putting this together. I know, you know, over the last month or so, there's been, you know, a lot of discussion about the way tenant concerns have been addressed, and that out of the angst that was created by the air conditioner discussion, this idea came out. A number of people approached me about the idea of tenants having a greater voice on the board, and also with the more democratic process of figuring this all out. I'm not sure that this is it, but this is, I appreciate that it's on the table and that we can start just, you know, entertaining how to better do this. So, thank you.
Counselor from Ward 2, then Ward 6.
Yes, I too think it's appropriate that it be referred, get full discussion. And yes, as a member of community resources and city services, I think community resources is probably the appropriate place. Thank you.
Great, Counselor.
I didn't catch "city service," did you say?
I, the motion on the floor is to refer to community resources, and I'm saying I think that's probably appropriate.
And legislative matters.
And legislative matters.
Also, my question is, the Northampton Housing Commission, where did they become part of this? Because I think that they also should be able to come and work out with what is occurring here, since we do have a commission. There is a housing commission. So, I think that they should be working also with any kind of changes, and also I think that their voice is very important on how you want to move on this.
I agree, and the current members of the Northampton Housing Authority Board are encouraged to collaborate with the council on the development of this proposal. So, this is a referral, so I don't want to say too much to the merits of it, but kind of jumped the gun and went right to the referral, just to provide a brief description. For the purposes of considering the referral, I'll just tell you, you know, in my opinion, you know, the idea was precipitated because of the air conditioning issue, but I think there are a number of issues that those of us who've been on the council for even a little while are familiar with. There's a lot of very difficult issues in the Northampton Housing Authority. It's not just air conditioning. The difficulty is, quite frankly, a lot of them blur the line between just general city issues and sort of, if, I don't know, if you want to call them landlord-tenant issues, you know? I've spoken to a woman who has had a broken stove, you know, in her apartment for far longer than she should have, you know, people who report, you know, that, I don't know, their room was fumigated without notice, and there's been things that are broken, and requests go unanswered, and so on. And I think what you're looking at is an agency that is not funded properly. And so, part of it is funding, but I also think there's a question of management and administration. And, you know, the difficulty is, these, this institution is kind of like an island, you know, because the, and that's in every community. The local communities agree to create them, but they're created by, as a matter of state law, and then they're kind of just out there on their own. And my fear is that they're sort of, they're neither, they're neither, they're neither side of the line, you know? They don't really have the democratic representation they should have to address the immediate things that affect them in their lives. I think that we have good people on the Northampton Housing Authority Board. I just want to make sure that's clear. But I think as a practical matter, the Northampton Housing Authority Board should be a little more sort of in terms of the policymaking and oversight role that it should play. And so, my theory, and that I put forward, and maybe not everyone agrees, and we'll see as we discuss this, is that if we have more tenants on the, join them on the board who actually have a stake in these policies, then perhaps those policymaking oversight powers will only be strengthened. And the example I've given is, you know, say you live in a condo, and your condo association is responsible for making rules about everything from can you have pets, to can you smoke, to what, what happens if the roof has a hole in it? Is how would you feel if everyone on the condo association board were either appointed by someone else, or they were all people who didn't live there?
Counselor, point of order, I think we're voting here on referral to committees, and I feel like we're going into the territory.
So, you don't want me to explain it?
Talking about.
The merits.
Okay, well, your point of order is sustained, because you're right, but as I, as I did point out, I did, the motion to do a referral was put on the floor before I could even explain what we were referring, but are you saying you want me to stop describing it?
Well, we could in fact, we could vote on the referral, and then we can have you continue, but I think that it's just, we're not doing this properly if we're hearing from you while we've got on the floor the referral.
Okay, well, then my, the discretion that I was seeking, I guess, has been curtailed. Your point of order is sustained, because you are correct, so I will, if wish, stop describing the proposal, so, okay? Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, I'd like to hear what you have to say about this, but I think we should do it after we vote on the referral.
Okay, well, I've said my piece, so. Is there any more discussion to the question of the referral? All those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Matters referred? Okay, so, we now go on to an order authorizing the City of Northampton to acquire a historic preservation restriction on the Hampshire County Courthouse. Is there a motion on this order?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Seconded by Counselor Carney. Any discussion on the order?
Where did this bump from?
You're asking where it came from?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see.
Preservation. Oh, there it is. Community Preservation.
It's Sarah LaValle's, you do preservation restrictions.
Is your, is your inquiry finished? You want, okay. So, yeah, it comes from the.
Probably repeat it.
Okay. So, this is upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee and the Historical Commission. It's 18.150, an order authorizing the City of Northampton to acquire historic preservation restriction on the Hampshire County Courthouse, order that whereas City Council previously approved Community Preservation Act CPA funding to assist in the historic rehabilitation of the historic Hampshire County Courthouse owned by the Hampshire Council of Governments on the corner of Main and King Street. And whereas the condition of the CPA funding is that the Hampshire Council of Governments grant the city a permanent historic preservation restriction on the courthouse. And whereas preservation of the courthouse, which is listed in the state and national registers of historic places, is important to the public and for the enjoyment and appreciation of its architectural, archaeological, and historical heritage, now therefore be ordered that the City Council of Northampton is authorized to acquire for historic preservation purposes a historic preservation restriction as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 184, Section 31 of the General Laws on the above described premises, and that the City Council hereby approves such historic preservation restrictions. Is there a motion to approve this order?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? Good, so, discussion. Any other discussion? This is, we did this, and now we're taking the historic preservation restriction.
Correct, yes, you gave, you gave funding, CPA funding, and now we're going back to make sure we have that preservation restriction.
Yes, I did, just a quick question for the mayor. When the city holds a preservation restriction of this sort, how does the monitoring and enforcement get handled within the city?[1618.23]